My wife's the show keeps.
Who was the guy, do you remember? Well, you coached the girls then too for how many years?
Oh, yeah.
What Heather and Andrea?
Yeah.
But did you have them ten and under?
Uh, twelve.
Twelve and under? Twelve, fourteen, and sixteen? Because you did it.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
The one state.
I couldn't remember. I remember you won it.
Lost fifty. Never should have.
I sort of remember that.
You remember that one?
That? No. I mean, I-
We were up by one or two.
Who was pitching?
Abby.
Abby?
And, uh... Easy play. We had a lawyer, we had two outs. Got him all back to her, she emailed him over the bag.
Oh, boy.
It was a throw score.
Are you ready? A few seconds.
But then when that was against the...
Yeah, I sort of remember some of that.
Yeah, the next year, we just wiped them.
Yeah. Okay, I believe it is six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start out with roll call.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinem?
Here. Well, welcome to all. We have a little bit different agenda tonight as the old council will finish up some old business and then we will get into the oath of office for the new mayor and council members and go from there. So, just didn't want you confusing me and Harry Buck and not Harry Buck, so. Uh, first item of approval of the agenda.
Um, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the minutes from the April fourteenth briefing meeting and the April eighteenth regular meeting. If there's any additions, corrections, otherwise approval.
Motion to approve.
Pay motion to approve the minutes from the two meetings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have the claims listed there for you on pages fifteen and sixteen.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims as listed. If there's any question on anything. Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a couple of second readings. First one is second reading of ordinance number six fifty-four. Listed for you on page seventeen there. Um... Not sure if there's any questions on that. Brian, anything to clarify there?
No, they, you know, they go both go hand in hand, six fifty-four and six fifty-five.
Right.
Will allow the sale of off-sale South Dakota wine at farmers' markets within three hundred feet of a church or school if the church or school sign off on it.
Can the motion be both?
Yeah. Eh, do them separate since they're two separate ordinances.
Okay, I'll make the motion approve six fifty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve amendment ordinance number six fifty-four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance six fifty-five. This is the farmer's market permit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the water treatment plant bids, which we discussed quite thoroughly. We wanted to make sure that the community was well aware of the impending water treatment facility improvement. We have, I think, about twenty-four million dollar... Somewhere in that range. We have some ARPA funds that can be used that will help. But what we'd like to do is before we make any kind of final vote on this, we'll open it up. This isn't the normal time for public hearing, but if there are anyone that is here that would like to speak to the water treatment and/or the reverse osmosis or any portion of it, we would invite you to come up, state your name, and be glad to open it up. All right.
Nobody?
Anybody? Good. Okay, council.
I wish there would have been a number of people that spoke up.
I had, I had one phone call today that was in opposition to the RO.
I have-
And that's all I've talked.
I've had some, you know, some contact and I would say the majority of people I've visited with have been in favor of the reverse osmosis.
I agree. Same.
So, I'm-
I just wanted to say I'm appreciative that we did take a tiny pause, though I had quite a few reach out, email, text, phone calls. I do have a few more questions or things, I guess, points I'd like to clarify, but to get it on discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve with the RO.
We have a motion and a second to approve with RO the water treatment plant bids. We'll open it up for discussion.
Could I ask Ben a few questions?
Ben Jolson with AD2S.
Well, I just thought it would be awesome if we could just provide a little bit of context about how we got to this point, maybe clear up a few misconceptions in the community. You know, we've been talking a lot about communication and in the last couple of weeks I've had a lot of communication on this topic and I've been able to address a lot of the specific questions, but I think other people have the same questions, so I think it would just be neat to take five minutes and, and kind of explore some of those. And in full disclosure, I did call Ben last week to get some of my questions answered and relayed to residents, so a lot of these are the same questions. Ben, can you just recap? I mean, a couple of the people that reached out to me said, "Connect to Lewis and Clark, connect to MCWC." Why is that not an option?
Yep, and those are both explored. Lewis and Clark has appropriated all of their water so far to date. Their options to connect to Lewis and Clark were open years ago. I couldn't state exactly when those were. So, the only options right now to connect to Lewis and Clark would be another Lewis and Clark member allocating a portion of their allocation to Brandon. It's really hard to get anyone to do that, especially for a long-term commitment. Everyone's really wants to hold on to those volume of water that they've been allocated from Lewis and Clark. Minnehawas was another option that originally had provided some input that it could be an option to provide water to Brandon, but it would be on a short-term basis. And then, I want to say it was a year later or so that was discussed with them again and they had found allocations for that water that they thought would be available to Brandon. So, that option pretty much got taken off the table from Minnehawas. So, both of those were explored and pretty much got shot down on, on both fronts from a long-term feasibility standpoint.
And Lewis and Clark Two may eventually circle back, but we're looking at decades?
I, off the top of my head, I couldn't say for sure when that was. And my understanding is the expansion, you know, first would go to options of current users for expanding their allocations. So, it's, it's hard to say if or how much would be available to connect to from Lewis and Clark, even when that expansion comes on.
Okay. And then I think there's a lot of residents that feel we have a water shortage. There's maybe some misunderstanding about what's going on with the water treatment plant and there may be a disconnect that it's actually to expand the capacity or the volume of what we can provide. Can you speak towards some of the information that you're aware of with the Aquifer recharge? And how confident we are in that water source not being something to worry about?
Yep. The Aquifer itself was studied from a different consultant on its usability long-term. We gave them some information on a, a highest usage scenario, which was the RO option. And they looked at that going out to, I believe it was year 2070, from a usage versus recharge rate on the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. And they didn't find any issues with recharge rate compared to the usage rate. So, from a water availability from the Aquifer, there's no issues or concerns there, at least currently with the planned usage going out to what the projected growth of Brandon would be for the next almost fifty years.
Okay. And as far as water quality, like the hardness aside, I think everybody fully has embraced that Brandon's water is hard. So, the stigma out there, the word radium, how does that get changed with reverse osmosis? Or altered?
In general, the front end of the plant before reverse osmosis is what targets a lot of the iron, manganese, and radium removal. And the plant currently does a really good job at removing all of those. You will get added benefit that RO being a membrane barrier will remove the radium, any remaining radium on the water that passes through RO. The current plant treats it down to non-detect levels for radium, so it's hard to say, you can't even measure what's down, what's remaining in the water, if any, because it's, it's down so low. So, you will get benefit that RO will remove any of the radium remaining in the water if it's there, of that water passing through the RO.
Okay. I had a couple of comments or questions about the ongoing maintenance costs that are obviously higher with the RO versus the non-RO. Just to clarify, though, like with filter media replacement, that's all already been anticipated into the expenses and the projections that we're looking at.
Yeah.
This isn't like a bare bones amount that's figured in and a lot of hiccups could come along the way?
No, the filter media, you get quite a long life out of. A lot of times you see twenty years out of the filter media. The, some of the maintenance costs are, you know, averages out membrane replacement. Typically those, you're looking at seven to ten years of lifespan and then those have to be replaced. With the right, with good treatment and keeping membranes clean on a regular basis, you can even stretch out the longevity of those membranes as well, especially on groundwater systems versus surface water systems, just because they're more consistent and typically easier to treat. On the, and then including the ONM costs are, there's some added chemicals with RO. Some of them are cleaning the membranes. You go through periodic cleanings to, I don't necessarily revive, but clean off any scaling or buildup that accumulates on the membranes. Typically, that's probably going to happen once or twice a year on a groundwater system.
Okay. I know you addressed this in the last meeting, but I've had a couple of people tell me that all RO systems are extremely wasteful. To get a good gallon of water, you'll waste four to ten gallons of water. We know that's not true. Can you elaborate on what our projected byproduct is?
Yeah, and the, the plant itself, you know, in-home systems are way less efficient just because they don't have the cleanings and kind of the pre-treatment beforehand. On large scale in the plant systems, they, they'll treat, I just run through the numbers. To treat our water going through the RO system, you're looking at a total plant loss of the concentrate or byproduct to the concentrate of twelve and a half percent, which is twenty-five percent of the water going through the RO system. So, water going through the RO system, seventy-five percent's going to come out as permeate, it's get, put back in the drinking water. Twenty-five percent goes out as the concentrate, which is removing all of the hardness and all of the byproducts that you don't, or that you're trying to remove out of the water.
Okay. Will water pressure be affected at all by the RO?
Nope. Would the pressure in the distribution system comes from the high-service pumps that are after the full treatment plant, so that won't have any effect on the distribution pressure at all.
Okay. And can you clarify again, what does this expansion of our water treatment plant look like capacity-wise? From what it is now to what is projected to be able to handle for our community?
It'll be doubling the plant capacity that's there now, from two thousand to four thousand gallons per minute total per day, or sorry, total flow through the plant in gallons per minute.
Okay. And then my understanding with the ARPA funds, if I did the math correctly, I believe it would cover ninety-three percent of the amount for RO on top of what the water treatment plant would be. And if we don't do RO, that amount goes down, a couple million dollars?
Yep, yeah. The funds are up at seven and a half million or up to thirty percent of the project.
Okay.
So, if you, if you don't do the RO and you just do expansion, you can still use the ARPA funds, but only up to thirty percent of the project, so it wouldn't be the seven and a half million. But, yeah, largely doing the full project with seven and a half million covers the majority of the cost of the RO system.
Okay. Okay, I think those are my questions.
Do you have any more? Any questions?
I had, I had a question for Christina, actually, but thank you very much. So, the water fund, the sewer fund are separate funds from our general fund.
Correct.
And so, projects that are water or sewer, that's how they're paid for. We do not co-mingle that money into the general fund so that it can be used for roads, parks, that sort of thing. That is a separate entity.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up with you, Ben?
Yeah, Jill.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jim.
Yeah, no problem. So... Here, I'll, I'll put a little of my perspective in this as, as well. But I think most residents in town feel we missed the boat on the first Lewis and Clark go-around and likely missed the boat on the MCWC. And we all know that the Lewis and Clark Two is, it's a possibility, but it's not going to be anytime soon. Does the recent big grant or whatever that the, that the Lewis and Clark got for expansion, does that possibly move us forward to getting, connected to Lewis and Clark? If, if we decide to do it in the future?
Without talking to them directly, I, I couldn't say for sure.
Okay. Do you know what those funds are going to be used for down there?
No, I don't.
Okay, that's fine. We've talked about communication and Jill, I think you're sitting there and I can't see you, but I think you've got a good person to interview and to discuss this in a, in a little article in the paper. I think it would be helpful for the community just to hear what and why we're trying to move forward with us and we'll see how the vote goes tonight, but either way, I think it would be a nice article and help fit our communication line item. I think that's something that the two of you can put together?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, I think it would be wonderful if we had some sort of a good positive article without a bunch of opinions and so, okay, that'd be, that'd be wonderful in my mind. As, as I mentioned, I think we missed the boat a few years, decades ago and I don't want to be a part of another council that does the same thing, so. Thanks for all your work.
Yep.
On this.
It's been our pleasure.
One more question for me. Why not a hundred percent RO? Why would that be a bad idea?
For one, of course, it costs a lot more. For another, pure RO water by itself is actually pretty aggressive. Because it has no nutrients in it, it wants to get back to equilibrium. It can be aggressive with any cement-lined pipe, any, any concrete basins you see at the plant. And also, there is health benefits of having minerals in your water. So, you, you don't necessarily want to remove all of them. Granted, you can drink pure RO water if you want, but there's, it comes down to those costs. It's aggressiveness, just gets harder to work with.
Another quick follow-up, you mentioned the pipes. So, running a RO water through our old pipes, uh, what's that?
With the current plan to just treat half the water through the RO, your, the blended water and the treated water going out to the distribution system is planned to be similar water quality as what's going on now. Granted, it's going to, we're going to reduce the hardness, but from a, you know, aggressiveness on pipes or its stability, it's going to be the same, we're targeting the same pH ranges. There's some chemicals added just for stability in the system and those, those will continue to be used. So, from a distribution system and then when, we're going to, our goal is to not affect the distribution system at all. As it gets towards startup, there'll be some final water sampling and optimization to make sure we're putting water out in the distribution system that's not having any detrimental effects on the system itself.
Okay.
I don't have a question, but I just want, actually, for you, Jack. And Brian, you have to help me. Probably before your time, we did have, was it Troy Lars?
Yep.
Troy Larson, is that right?
Yeah.
From Lewis, yeah. Lewis and Clark did come and speak to council, but I think it was before you came on. And so, that might be a good thing too. And at that time, he kind of explained, what Ben just explained, that, you know, we missed the boat. It might be another twenty years, but if there's more funds, how, and I know we've been in talks with Ray, Brian, like we've been, we definitely told him at that time, the council wants to be aware of when and if they, you know, move forward with Lewis and Clark Two.
Correct. Lewis and Clark Two is, is, at least from what Mr. Larson indicated earlier, that it's probably decades before they move forward with Lewis and Clark Two. They are looking at an expansion. But reading a recent article in the Argus, that water is spoken for, for the expansion. And just so everybody's clear, Lewis and Clark, the decision for Lewis and Clark was made in nineteen ninety-three. At that point in time, the city council voted not to join Lewis and Clark for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons a day at a cost of two million dollars. So, if we had joined Lewis and Clark, they wouldn't even have covered our usage in nineteen ninety-three, let alone today. So, that was done in ninety-three. I think Lewis and Clark finally got started in about two thousand and three and they still have not served all of their communities.
So, I appreciate you bringing that up, Brian, because I feel like, sitting here as a council member, you do the best that you can with the information that you have. Those council people at that time had no clue that Brandon was going to grow and be as prosperous and as great a community as it is now. And so, I think we should give them a little bit of grace and as Brian said, who knows when we would have even gotten hooked up. And two million dollars back then in ninety-three, that was a heck of a lot of money in that city budget.
To double our water treatment plant, what are our projections for how long this will sustain us with our growth?
On the current growth projections, if it continues to grow, you know, fairly stable as, as Brandon is now, about seven to twenty-seventy, so about fifty years.
Hey, thank you, Ben. Any other comments, questions? Hearing done. Do we want a roll call vote on this, Christina, or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good decision and that'll serve this community for quite some time. So, before I leave, I want to make a couple of comments real quickly. First of all, I want to, I want to thank the council. They have been a pleasure to work with. I've, I've enjoyed my experience in learning. Your dedication to and commitment to continue, you know, speaks highly of you and we're, we're in good hands with, with all of you here. So, and I, I welcome Colin will be a great addition also to the, to the council. I want to thank the city staff. I have gotten to know them over the last year. And my respect, Brian, is, is tremendous. You work very hard. You're very, very knowledgeable about what doesn't get us into trouble and what might get us into trouble, but yet you're also, the depth of your knowledge about how city government works is, is very impressive and we're fortunate as a community to have you. And I've mentioned this about you, Christina, you are unbelievable with the numbers. And again, I've, I've had several CFOs work for me in, in the furniture business, running three-hundred-million-dollar company. You, you would have fit in very well. And again, we're very fortunate. I haven't had a chance to work with Tammy as much, but I, I'm telling you, there is so much going on. I think that's what I've learned the most about the community. I've lived here for forty-four years and I had no clue about what was happening in this community. And it's amazing what, what you have to keep your hand on. And I'm glad we've gotten you a little bit more help and, uh... I went for a walk today and I saw the tank was up on the water tower and it was, it was good to see. But, you know, for those of you in the crowd and citizens, we are very fortunate to have the people here working for us and they're working for us. And I love the fact that the council has really emphasized communication. And I think going forward, I, I think that's going to be imperative. I'd love to see them spend more time with P and Z. I'd love to see them maybe more time with the school district, finding out what others are doing, because in the end, I know this about these people, they want to do the, the right thing. They want to do it right. They want to serve. And there are hard decisions that sometimes have to be made and they are not, not always popular. You know, I've told my wife when I come home sometimes, she's, "How'd it go?" "Well, we decided this. How do you feel?" "Well, I'm not sure." At least in coaching, I knew when we got our butts kicked or when we won. Here, I'm not sure sometimes whether we won or lost. But anyway, it's been a great experience and I'm glad I did it. I'm looking forward to finally being retired officially, so. And last but not least, I want to, I want to wish Harry the best. I've known Harry for a long time. I've got so much respect for him and he'll do just a wonderful job. And with that, I am looking for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Um, no, not quite yet.
Not quite.
If, if you don't mind, Jim, I'd like to say a couple of words.
Okay.
Back when we, we appointed you, we had a very divided council. And I did not like that situation and it did not look like it was going to get resolved. I felt my character was called into question. I did not appreciate that. And it was good to have somebody step forward and take the reins and put that all back to bed. And so, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing so.
Appreciate that, Jack. All right.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, and, and I would like to say, I didn't know we were going to be done that fast, to thank Vicki for her service. She stepped up at an awkward time and filled a position and she has a young family and a husband with a big job. And so, we appreciate all that you've done, Vicki, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
I'll start you off, you have to raise your right hand. You don't wanna read that, because I'll start you. I, Bart, Fish, and me, been elected to the office as all of the new ones. Instead of City of Angeles, South Dakota, we settled, swear that we support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and all local organizations, State of City of Maryland, and then I will be thrown in the car, sharing to the best of my ability, before I leave, send my staff office of all, according to the law. Welcome, you can take Vicki's spot next to us.
Colin, Gary, I'll be there.
Colin, welcome. Thanks, bud, appreciate you. Gary?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll call the, uh, meeting of the new council to order. I'll start by, uh, I want to say thanks to Jim and Vicki. Um, also, everybody is, I'm sure, very appreciative of the great job that they've done, um, and I, I appreciate it. I also would like to say that I'm looking forward, uh, to working together with this council, um, and the staff, as we, uh, continue to help our great community move forward. So, that being said, um, we'll call the meeting to order and have a roll call.
Clark?
Here.
Fish?
Yeah.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Steen?
Here.
Mayor Buck?
Here. Okay, the next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Motion and a second to approve the agenda, any, um, additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next is the election of the, uh, council president and the council vice president. So what we're looking for here, as I understand it, is basically a motion?
Correct.
For, uh, the president of the council. The president of the council will fill in anytime the mayor is gone, and so, um, I'm looking forward, uh, look for a motion.
I would, I would make a motion to approve the current president and vice president.
Can we do both?
Sure.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
The current president, Bart, Fish, the current vice president, stand by.
Looking for a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, uh, the current president and vice president. Uh, any further discussion?
We still vote?
Yep.
They can vote?
There's no, there's no procuring hearing interest, they're gonna get a raise.
Well, Brian, I, I take the best of that, again. I said it earlier, and that was the perception why I couldn't vote before, and I don't think that's, uh, appropriate, quite frankly.
You asked, I told you, there's no conflict, they can vote.
So there was no conflict when, uh, we tried to stop me from voting.
That was not just me, that was the city attorney's opinion, the council approved your, your vote, so.
Other questions?
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can't keep doing this.
Draw for seating. This is something that, um, I understand is not necessarily, excuse me, Jack, we're gonna move forward here. Um, this is not something that necessarily we have to do, but if you would like to, you can draw for seating arrangements. Any thoughts? Do we need a motion on that or not?
No.
Okay. Consent calendar?
Nothing.
Nothing on the consent calendar? All right. Visitors and timed items. This is an opportunity for anybody here that would like to address the council. Uh, we do limit it to five minutes, and we would like for you, if you have something to discuss, to come forward and state your name and address, and let us know your thoughts. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing. First reading of ordinance 656.
It will require mailed notices to all property owners within 300 feet of a property that has a proposed variance on it. So that's in addition to posting in the paper, posting on the property, posting at city hall.
Uh, we discussed this at planning and zoning, we approved it of planning and zoning, so I would make a motion to approve it.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 656. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Real quick, real quick, was the only reason for this, was just to, again, back to the old communication thing, more than anything?
Correct.
Correct, just, just being more communicated with them.
Yep.
Colin, there was a few, uh, things that, um, a few of the residents claimed they didn't really know that rezoning, um, was happening, or conditional use permits were recurring, and they, there was a few that didn't feel like they were notified properly. So we, we had some discussion about this, and talked about, uh, you know, trying to do something a little bit extra, so.
I'd just add, Colin, that what we had before complied with law, this isn't required by state law, but it, you certainly can add on to it and, and have it. So what was done previously was comporting with state law.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Next is, uh, first reading of ordinance 657.
Includes the same mailed notice requirement for conditional use permit applications. Uh, just as a reminder, after, or before these become effective sometime in June, uh, we'll have a resolution in front of the council, since we're incurring additional cost, anticipating about 40 to 45 mailed notices on average, um, and then additional staff time to print and stuff envelopes. So that'll be coming, um, sometime in June.
Okay, this is the first reading, I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance 657. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Operations and, uh, maintenance award for wastewater.
Uh, we received notice and an award from D A N R for 2021 Operation and Maintenance Award for our wastewater system. So. Raleigh's sitting in the back.
Raleigh?
Raleigh, Raleigh and his crew are the ones that, that, uh...
I got to take a little tour with Raleigh's crew last week, and, uh, it's, uh, it's pretty impressive, pretty impressive operation, so, and, uh, I'm grateful for the award. Okay? Move to old business?
None.
Okay, standing committee reports.
Uh, you've got three seasonal staff for the golf course. Michelle Surmyer, Ashley Lower's lounge beverage cart, and then Michelle, uh, Michelle Stellinga for a cleaning position. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the, uh, seasonal staff hires for the, um, uh, golf course. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Parks and Rec.
Uh, this is a list, list of our lifeguards for the pool this season, uh, naming kind of our manager assistant and head guards, as well as our lifeguards. Approval would be contingent on some of those getting their certifications, we have a few that have classes yet into May, so.
I would make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion and second to approve the seasonal hires for the pool. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. We have a request for a carnival in McCarty Park, page 48 and 49.
We did receive a copy of the insurance.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, Mayor Buck, distinguished council members and community leaders. My name is Josh Will Precht, I'm one of the pastors at Celebration United Methodist Church, and I'm here to, uh, pitch the carnival, which, uh, we are dubbing it as, uh, Brandon's Big Celebration, uh, pun intended, of course, with the name, of course, with the church. Purpose of this is, uh, with us as a, as a church, we're doing together, and we've, we're trying to determine how we can really have some fun here in the community, especially thinking post-COVID, uh, thinking about how important it is to have authentic community and bringing people together. So that's how this idea came about. Out of all people in the church, the pastor is here because I have a connection with those that would be bringing the carnival to Brandon. Uh, my brother and sister-in-law, um, they helped run this carnival, uh, so they, uh, they will, they work up here in the summer times, and they go in Louisiana, uh, down in the wintertime. So what we'd be proposing is bringing a, a 13 ride carnival to McCarty Park.
Oh.
Uh, it would be, it's a very clean operation, uh, if you, I don't think this is in your notes, but who we'll be working with is Max Carnival, uh, you can certainly look at them on, on Facebook. Uh, they have, they run a clean operation, uh, they take very good care of their equipment. For me, and seeing different carnivals, uh, you know, I live in Dahl Rapids, but I've been to, uh, other communities, um, they have a very impressive operation, um, from staffing to the level of quality with the rides are great. If you've been to Harrisburg Days, it's the same setup, the same group, so if you've seen that work there, uh, you can be familiar with the work that'd be coming here. So, uh, we're excited to partner with them, and the days that we'd be looking at'd be right before Memorial Day, it'd be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, before Memorial Day, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, is it, uh, that'd be the 26th, 27th, 28th, if I remember correctly? Um, off the top of my head. Setup, how that would look is we'd wanna comply with and, uh, work with the parks, uh, to make sure that we are abiding by, uh, curfew, which I believe was, was 11 o'clock? Okay? So how it would look would be Thursday, they'd be set up and ready to go, start at 6 o'clock at night, run till 11. Same setup for Friday. Saturday would be a, uh, 1 o'clock to 11 o'clock. Thinking about this, uh, we'd also want to, uh, look for opportunities to partner with the community in regards to, uh, commerce. We want to partner with, uh, Brandon, Brandon, uh, businesses, uh, think, uh, think vendor fair, vendor booths, also, uh, food trucks, if there is businesses in town that would like to be a part of selling their food there, that can, that's also an opportunity. We just need to make sure it doesn't, uh, cross the line of the funnel cakes, so, uh, because they are full service, they bring funnel cakes, they bring food, they, they make the best, like, uh, freshly squeezed lemonade, it's the best, uh, no sugar, I promise, I'm kidding. But it is, it's a great opportunity, and we thought this would be a, a great place to have it. Why it's coming at the, at the 11th hour is because the initial plan was, and many of you, you know this, that there was land next to Celebration United Methodist that was up for sale, we were planning to have it there because it was four acres, I mean, that would, that would house it. Turns out that the, uh, the rights, a bidder came along, and the property was sold, and they decided that they didn't want to house a carnival on, on their ground, and that's fine. Uh, so, uh, Randy Gunick, one of the members for church, brought this up, and, uh, and this is how the idea came about. So some of the things that the Parks Board recommended and looked into, one of the things is, uh, we are people, we leave a footprint behind, uh, so we, you know, think trash, bathrooms, uh, we would need to, uh, we would need to work together to make sure that we would have enough receptacles to cover the trash, but the, the carnival itself would be willing to bring in a rollaway if, if that's what the city desires, to make sure that the trash is taken care of. Also, in regards to bathrooms, they would, they would put together and organize porta-potties, and then, um, of course, I believe there's, there are some restrooms there at the park, but, uh, they would organize that. Uh, thinking about other things, plan, one of the things that's been on my mind is, is parking. The initial plan is, and as you can see on the screen, there is a red line there, that's where we would have the, the entryway, all the games and rides would be around that circle. The small circles around those trees there are, are small Think Kitty rides, where they're riding in a car, and they're going around in a circle. Um, the bigger rides, uh, Think Ferris Wheel, uh, Think Like Tilt-A-Whirl, uh, one thing they just worked on, it's freshly painted, ready to go, called a tornado, uh, so think bigger rides for that, about half and half. Parking, we would be looking at, uh, and also depending on if there is a baseball game there, we want to leave parking right next to the baseball field for patrons using the field. Initial parking, we'd be thinking would be across the street where the hockey rink is. Also, overflow parking would be, um, where the soccer fields are. One thing I would like to, and this hasn't mentioned, and I just want to thank, of course, the, everyone I've talked to, Brian, Christina, Devin, uh, they've been so, so great to work with. One thing that we need to partner up with and figure out is, there are RVs and housing for them and their workers that would need to be figured out, um, preferably with, uh, 200 amp power. They have their own distribution system, so that's helpful, but, uh, that would be the only thing that hasn't necessarily been thought of yet, because, uh, would like to lean on your expertise on parking for that. I've talked a lot, pastors can be very windy, so I'm going to stop talking. I'm very excited about this, and I would welcome any questions from the council, uh, at all, so.
Are you planning on making this an annual event?
Yeah, barring your permission, would love that. I get very excited, I'm a frontal lobe thinker, so just gonna say, uh, because it's short-term, we want to focus strictly on carnival, and then looking for opportunities to share the good word. Going forward into next year, should you decide this is a, a thing you want to continue partner in doing, we'd like to get music involved. What we're thinking about is, uh, I don't want to say the word because it's really big, um, but remember Lifelight, not that big necessarily, but, because that wouldn't work from McCarty Park, but just think, like, we'd be looking at like a Night of Hope, where we'd have Christian, Christian artists come in, uh, we'd be, uh, we'd have a concert right there, and it would be open to the public. Thinking, uh, also, one of the nights, we'd talk about doing a youth rally, those are things that've been kicked around, uh, in our visioning team at our church, that we're excited about. So, uh, not necessarily doing that this year, because of course, we, it, it's three weeks away, and it's hard to plan, uh, that close ahead, so. Things down the line, we'd like to continue partnering if it, we decide.
And with the RV question that you brought up, would it be possible for them, uh, to park at the church, or do they need to be by the equipment to?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, so I did bring that up with them, ideally, they like to be close to the rides, um, specifically for setup, i- if, if anything should happen, that they're right there with the rides, um, especially if inclement weather, making sure that everything's taken care of, so that would be ideal. So, uh, again, if there's ideas or recommendations, would love to hear that.
Does staff have any recommendations on that?
Perfect.
What about, uh, for, for parking? Shuttleering people from parking lot somewhere, I don't know if it's the school, or, and if you're really looking for RV stuff, maybe that'll use it. I would say explore some of those.
Okay.
Options, maybe?
Absolutely.
Other, other large parking lots, uh, the school, maybe even?
Yeah.
That might be a good time of the year, something like that.
I get the, the feel that they want to probably be in vicinity, so if they are dealing with vandalism or other things.
But I'm thinking, I'm thinking public.
Public parking?
Oh, I see, I see.
So, I'm just, just spitballing here, so if you think of something, feel free to interrupt. Uh, so, parking lot, across the street, parking lot at the soccer complex. I also noticed that there was a, uh, a patch of ground, kind of by the post office, it's right on the corner, it's kind of a open space, I don't know who owns that or if that'd be a possibility, but again, I'm just thinking out loud. Oh, okay.
A barrel.
Okay. Okay. Okay, oh, yep, yep.
Yeah, I think we, I, I, I love the sound of this, I think we could get the kids and, you know, vendors as, as well, food trucks.
Yes.
Another, like, an ice cream truck or something.
Any chance you could have a dunk tank for the mayor's wife?
Oh, my goodness. You know, we can...
Mayor's wife, I said.
Wow.
Uh, Park Board did, uh, recommend that we approve this request.
Have a motion? Yes.
Have a motion and a second to approve this, uh, request. Any further discussion?
Real quick, one, one more question for you, so, uh, obviously, this is free to the, free to the public, just, rides will cost money, is that? Yeah, rides will cost, so just, uh, to give you an idea, uh, they, they would like to keep it as simple as possible, wristbands are like $25, but I think you can ride as long as you want, so, I mean, it's, um, it's fairly affordable, and then we're also gonna be working with our, uh, missions team, figuring out how we can best do this, but how we can maybe buy rides in advance, um, and, and, and find ways to distribute those to, ideally to, to families in need, but again, it's, uh, that, that's one avenue of distribution, so we're kicking... one avenue of distribution, so we're kicking that around with submission funds that we have available to us.
When you are talking about the people coming, how many RVs are we talking?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
Is there a possibility they could go back on the peninsula and park RVs back there?
Is there power back there?
There's room, but I just don't know if there's power.
Okay.
Would a generator be feasible? They have their own generators.
I can, I can ask them. But yeah, they mentioned 200 amp. And by the way, not an expert electrician, so I don't know what the heck that means, but that's what they'd be looking for and they have a distribution system to patch it to their different RVs and stuff, so.
Would we like a medium-sized generator?
Get an all kinds of generator, I could get all, yes.
I'd say work with Devin to work out the details.
Absolutely.
Any others, any other thoughts?
What were the dates again, I'm sorry?
26th, 27th, 28th.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And out of curiosity, do we know, and maybe we can huddle up later, is the baseball field being used during that time? Do we know?
More likely than not.
I would assume so. I mean, because our baseball fields are being used, so.
That Saturday may be enough, but.
Okay, just curious. We'll be out of the way, so.
Okay, if we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Work with Devin.
Looking forward to the opportunity and planning on after, post, after this is all done, we'd like to come back and get any feedback from you and with your permission, would like to renew forth the following year, so.
Perfect.
Thank you, City Council, appreciate it.
Good job, thanks.
I will not be on that ticket.
Okay, moving on. Fields D and E irrigation agreement.
Brandon Valley Baseball has approached the city about irrigating Fields D and E. They would like to install that irrigation system. This agreement just outlines that they will install it, donate it to the city, and then they will be responsible for operation, maintenance, repairs.
I would make a motion to approve this. It'll take some water capacity out of our system, because it'll come right from the well. I want you to go through the treatment.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing done.
I'll give you a quick comment. We started with A, B, C, and a couple, adding a couple more. Ultimately, I'd like to see the rest of them done. But it's going to take time, but this is, this is just one more step to keep improving the basketball park, which is, besides our school system, many of you have heard me say this, I think it's one of the jewels of our city, this baseball complex, and getting more and more recognition.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Public safety. Chief Staffel?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
So we are still in a vacant position. We did complete testing and.
You've got to be at the mic for.
Sorry. Talking my way up here. We had an open position, we had testing, and then those that passed, we had interviews. I think we did roughly 10 interviews. At the conclusion of that, we selected Amanda Jezzeritz to fill the vacant position. She has accepted a preliminary offer pending council approval, and then there's a bunch of other things she'd have to go through too. So that is.
Would that be our first female officer?
Not in our history, no, but it'd be the only female officer currently at this time. Yeah. I believe there's been two previous. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there was two previously. There has been two in the history of Brandon.
Two, and they tried for a third, but.
Okay.
So we have a motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry. Thanks, Jamie. The monthly inspection report, is that something that we need to?
Nope, that's just information.
Okay.
What is that, monthly inspection report?
That's from the inspections Department, basically updating the council on building permits, where we're at, and then various projects that are underway.
Okay. What, do we ever get a inspection report on all our city buildings? Who inspects them once a year or whatever?
Well, we have folks come in and take a look at the roof, but as far as a full-blown inspection on city buildings, we don't.
So who, I'm a little surprised that we don't have some sort of.
About every, about every three years, the insurance company comes in and does an inspection on all the city properties, including the buildings, and they make recommendations if we need to update or change anything.
What about, like, department heads? You guys put together a wish list, anything like that, but you see, I would assume that you guys go around and look at your buildings? No?
Excellent.
Yeah, if there's, if there's.
Their budget, I think their budget time.
Yeah.
Improvements or anything that you need.
Okay. Well, I'll discuss this more in the CIP meetings, but maintenance is a big deal. And lack of maintenance is even worse. Okay, all right, thank you.
Moving into administration then?
We've got a number of annual appointments, the list of official depositories, and these should have separate motions for each one. The depositories are listed there, the city attorney, voice law firm, Lisa Marso, the official newspaper, Brandon Valley Journal, the appointment to the Park Advisory Committee of Al Kirkabee, P&amp;Z members of Thomas Nichols and Rob Shoneman, member Jorgensen to the revolving loan fund, as well as the library committee unless somebody else wants to do it. You want it?
Yeah, library card.
You can make that motion.
Have they, have you ever met?
Uh, no.
No, I'm asking Tim if he's ever met.
I've never read a book.
We do all the depositories in one motion?
Yep.
Okay, I'll take a motion for the official depository.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the official depository as mentioned. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City Attorney Lisa Marso, Bryce Law Firm.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Lisa as the city attorney. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Official newspaper.
Motion to approve. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the Brandon Journal as the official newspaper. Any further discussion?
Can I ask why you're accusing yourself of the Journal?
I'm going to ask.
I guess I will recuse myself.
Me also, but I'm not voting.
Thank you. For the clarification, I had no idea.
So the four of you that are left, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Park Advisory Committee.
I would move that appointment, Mayor, for Al Kirkabee.
Aye.
Motion and a second for Al Kirkabee. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Planning and zoning. Nichols and Shoneman.
I would move to approve. I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Yes, I brought this up earlier about all of these boards and commissions, I guess, but we'll start here that I would like to see a little bit more public input and notices going out to every, anytime, actually anytime we have these appointments, additional notices going out. Can we, I mentioned before, and Brian, you said you put it in your tickler file. I think, I think I'd like to do something a little bit more than that and put it on as an actual agenda item.
Okay.
To have that discussion. I think, I know everybody says that, you know, that institutional knowledge is what's needed and required to keep moving forward with things, but I think, and that's very, very true. But I think new ideas and new blood on these boards and commissions is always a good thing. Same way when we rotate councils. There's a lot of institutional knowledge, but we all were new at one time and we all learned. And Colin, you're going to be learning a lot. I've learned a lot, and we all have. And we were, we had, many of us had no experience, maybe you've been with the city and stuff, that's a little different, maybe, but I'd just like to make sure that we're opening it up to the public and getting notices out to them that these are available and educate them. Again, communication, articles in the paper about when these vacancies come up, and maybe it'll spark some, somebody to say, yeah, I'd like to get involved on the offense bar, the Parks Board, or wherever. So, so if we can put that, where do we want to, where can we put that in as an agenda item and talk about these terms of these people?
If you want to fill out a council action form, and we can put it on whatever agenda, we could put it on for next meeting if you want.
When do we want to wait until we're closer to that, to this organizational meeting, like January?
Makes no difference, really.
Organizational meeting, when you mean.
Well, this is our, this is our organizational meeting for the council. So I'm thinking, I don't know if it's a summer item, but closer to this meeting than like next month. I don't, I mean, I don't care.
Any other discussion?
Any other comments as to a timing, anybody?
What was that?
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve Nichols and Shoneman for planning and zoning. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The Brandon Revolving Fund, Tim Jorgensen, two-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Tim as the, for the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund. Any discussion?
Do you want to explain what that is?
The revolving loan fund was set up, oh, I think back in the 80s, we had a, we obtained a CDBG grant from the federal government to attract a business. That was granted to the city, the city then loaned that out to the business. The city gets to retain that money and then turn around and loan it out to future businesses that are interested in coming to town. Fairly, it meets as needed. You know, I think the last large appropriation was for the COVID relief loans to local businesses. Before that, probably Marmon, I think, was the, was ODAC storage, forgot about those. So with the interest rates as low as they've been, it hasn't been a real attractive program, but with interest rates ticking up, the revolving loan fund may see some additional work. Historically, it's been restricted to industrial, but I think with the COVID relief, they maybe opened it up at least a little bit to more commercial retail sector.
So are they interest-free?
No, very low, one to three percent. The COVID loans were.
The COVID loans, they do interest-free, but typically no, they're.
Did they run around 2% on that?
Somewhere around there, a little bit less than that.
Pretty low.
Is that a set rate or how's that determined?
It's set. Set by the board at the time the loan is made.
At the time the loan is made, yeah.
So is there a dollar limit on these?
Yeah, there's a certain percentage for whatever money is in that fund, and I can't remember off the top of my head what that percentage is. It's not a lot.
Any other discussion?
And how, I guess, how is that promoted? Do we promote that somehow so people know that these funds are possibly available?
Typically, it's been through Makita, Lakita, Sum Metro Growth. If an industrial developer wants to come in, that's usually where it's promoted at.
So is this for all new, new business?
Could be existing, if they're going to expand. It's not for operations typically. If an existing business is going to expand or new business coming to town.
Do you know the account balance?
Um, not off the top of my head.
It's less than a million.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Half a million?
Is it 500,000?
Tell you in one second. 417,000.
So how does that get funded?
Through interest. Yeah, it's just through the interest that we gain on it.
When the program was started, I'm assuming that the money was, that amount of money would have done a lot more than it currently does today. The amount of money that's left in there does not do as much, especially in industrial development, as it one time did. You know, it used to be that you could build a pretty nice industrial building for a half a million dollars. It's not really, I mean, so it hasn't been utilized a whole lot, I would say, by the public, to answer your question, because I think the person who was sort of responsible for it before was trying to promote only industrial development with it. It certainly could be used for retail or commercial or anything somebody wanted to use it for, but it's not going to fund a project. It's going to fund a small portion or something, but, so that's the other reason why it doesn't get used a whole lot.
And it was never intended to be the primary funding source. It's the gap financing that the, you know, the bank won't fund a certain portion of a project. That's what it's for, it's for gap financing.
I think it was very helpful during COVID when we had businesses apply to cover payroll. I don't remember how many loans we gave out, they were smaller.
Probably about the $300,000. Yeah, there's a few.
I think that was a huge thing that we did.
And the criteria is that maybe not 10% of the total one balance, so we can only get one of those and it's up to 10% of the board and some of the other balance. Well, it's not a lot, it helps, it helps project. That's something Patrick kind of asked, or will be adding to his when he goes on, talks to businesses and such too, that we have this opportunity.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve Tim for the revolving loan fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And the library committee, Tim.
Dave, if you want it.
I'll, I'll take, I got a library card.
That's a lot of stress on my side. I would like the motion that Dave Call, in charge of the library committee or whatever, with the library committee.
My question is, have you read a book? Because Tim said he hasn't read a book, so I'm just asking.
I can show you my receipts.
Okay.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Dave Call to be the newly appointed library fund, or library representative. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. And we have some mayoral appointments that says no council action is required. And so we have, for administration, we have Call, Audit Committee, excuse me, is Clark and Call, Golf Course is Parliament, Park and Rec is Fish, Public Safety is Clark, Streets Jorgensen, and Utilities is Colin Steen.
What's Utilities?
Sewer and Water.
Water, Sewer, Streetlights, Stormwater.
You can add audit too if you want.
Okay, we'll move on. Resolution 1422.
Resolution 1422 is a resolution authorizing the execution terms, issuance, sale, and payment of the water surcharge revenue bond not to exceed 19 and a half million dollars, so this would. half million dollars, so this would be for the water treatment plants.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve, resolution fourteen dash twenty-two. Any further discussion?
This does not include, right?
Yes.
It does.
That should probably be in motion, shouldn't it?
No, this is just a, this is not to exceed nineteen and a half million, so this is just.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Number four is the organizational chart on page ninety and ninety-one. I looked that over, seems like it makes sense to me.
Yeah, with, with the addition of the Development Director, we split the zoning and land use duties off from the Engineering Department. Is the only change.
Do you need approval of that?
Correct.
Motion is second to approve the organizational chart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Resolution number fifteen dash twenty-two.
Along the same vein, with the addition of the, the Development Director, we'd like to add a couple of names to the, and the Assistant Finance Officer. We'd like to add a couple of names to the authorized agents for signatures on Platts. So we're adding the Development Director as the authorized agent for the City Council, and then we're adding the Assistant Finance Officer as the authorized agent for the Finance Officer.
So, move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, any further discussion?
Yeah, so who's, who can approve Platts now?
Well, the Engineer and Development Director review them, and then once they meet the standards, Tammy will typically send out an email saying this plat meets the standards, and then it makes its route around for signatures. City Engineer will sign first typically, and then the Finance Officer will fi- sign, and then I will sign. And if I'm gone, then the Development Director or the Finance Officer can sign for the City Council. If Christina's gone, Tessa can sign for her.
Who's going to sign if Tammy's absent?
Uh, Raleigh. Close works director.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. CIP meeting.
Uh, we're looking.
Twenty-third, is it?
Yep, twenty-third is the tentative schedule for the first.
Four twins tickets that night, mister.
What do you have?
Four twins tickets that night.
Oh, and they're on a hot streak now, too.
I only have to go to the CIP meeting.
All right.
Says who?
I'll keep that in mind. I'm going to the CIP meeting, I can't wait.
So that's the.
I'm excited about it.
And if anybody's opposed to an afternoon, or late afternoon, like a three o'clock CIP meeting?
So.
How long first? We'll try to keep it to an hour, hour and a half, the first one. We're currently reviewing costs for the existing projects that are on the CIP.
So right now you got agenda from the, you got the twenty-third.
Yep. I would imagine alternating Mondays, so the second and fourth Monday in June.
Can you send an alpha email?
Yeah, we will.
Do you need an approval of this?
Pardon?
Do you need an approval?
No, this is just for, we'll send out, you know, the current CIP, and then any updates that we've got on costs out to you before the meeting.
Okay, next is communication. What's the thought process there?
This is just, we're trying to, to let the council know what types of, of communications we do with the public. They're listed there with either textedly or Facebook, mailings, journal articles, et cetera. And we'll try to do that each meeting.
Right, Julie, you got one of mine, right? Maybe two?
Yeah.
Chestnut Ridge, concept plan.
Real quick, just a reminder for the council, for a process for the developers to submit these plans, is we have, in our ordinance and design standards, we have a checklist, and in that checklist, they have different requirements for the different steps of submittals. And so there's really three different kinds of submittals. The first submittal is the concept plan, which is on the agenda tonight. This one is just for informational purposes. It has bare bones information, and it's really just a chance for planning and zoning and for council to look at it and give some feedback to the developer. So by no means does it have all of the details on drainage and water and sewer and all of those types of items. The next step after this would be they would work on their preliminary plans, and that's the formal approval. That one has a little bit more of the details on water, sewer. That is also the time where they can come and petition other improvements. One of those improvements would be that west side sewer main that we have sixty percent designed. And then, east side, east side sewer main, sorry. And then that preliminary plan is formal approval for P and Z first, and then it will come to council. And then their third step would be development engineering plans, and then those development engineering plans are just approved by city, by city staff. So the, what's in front of you tonight is just for discussion purposes. It did go in front of planning and zoning at their last meeting. There was some discussion on page ninety-five. I did write down some of the main topics of that discussion. Some of it was zoning, some of it was cul-de-sacs. I'll let Nick Van Overshield kind of go through his plan with you first, and then you can ask him questions, and we can talk about what planning and zoning also discussed, too.
Thank you, Tammy. Nick Van Overshield with Van Overshield Companies, twenty-six oh four West Bittera Street, Sioux Falls. So as Tammy said, in front of you is Chestnut Ridge addition. This is an eighty-acre development. We've been working on be the southeast corner of Chestnut Boulevard, Boulevard and, and Redwood. We've been, we've had some formal meetings with Brandon Valley Schools. They have the twenty acres right to the, just to the south of this. We've been going over their proposed timelines, our proposed timelines for construction. Obviously, the west side trunk line sewer extension is a, is a, is a big part of, of all of this and the timing of that for making things go, but they have a pretty aggressive schedule starting this year with, with Robert Benis being busting at the seams capacity-wise to get this east side school going and, and going soon. So again, we'll be going side by side with them with this development to get infrastructure in and get some rooftops going. It would be built in, just quick before we go into your questions, it would be built in four twenty-acre phases. I know one thing that came up in P and Z was the resistance on annexation to get Chestnut Redwood built out. This development wouldn't be dependent on that. We need to get paved up to East Chestnut Trail, or we need to get Chestnut Boulevard paved up to East Chestnut Trail. We would then go in with private developers agreements with us, this, and the Brandon Valley Schools, and then the, the west side sewer trunk extension. But where I was going with that is phase one would be the southeast corner, phase two southwest, phase three northeast, and then the final phase would be the northwest corner up to that intersection of Chestnut Boulevard and, and Redwood.
Can you stay ahead or keep pace with the school district?
We wouldn't build on, we wouldn't build on all these lots ourselves. We're a builder of both single-family homes and multifamily, but some of these lots we would be selling off at the same time as we, as we built. Our, our anticipation, each phase would take about, about two to three years to build out, and then we move on to the next one, so, you know, by the time we got to the northwest corner, we'd be out about eight to ten years through each of the four twenty-acre phases.
So the assumption is that you would come in and ask for annexation?
Correct, yep, yep. And to go over some proposed timelines, in the meetings we've had with, with the school district, sewer, we're both looking for sewer in twenty twenty-two here. Again, as Tammy said, I believe that's sixty percent designed out. I don't know as far as the CIP funding, what's been set aside for that, but I believe that's been set aside as well. So that'd be in twenty twenty-two. Chestnut Trail would be built out and completed in summer of twenty twenty-three. School construction would start in twenty twenty-four, finish in twenty twenty-five, with school opening fall of twenty twenty-five, welcoming, welcoming students. We would want the first twenty-acre phase paved, infrastructure and platted in fall of twenty twenty-four and starting construction on rooftops. So we'd be starting building construction on rooftops about a year prior before the school opens. And total housing units with the lots, multifamily, townhomes, fourplexes, and twin homes would be about four hundred and fifty doors or homes.
That is really exciting, so thank you.
Yeah, we have, we only have, we've been working the last five years in kind of the south eighty acres of this section, if you will, right south of this, and we have seven lots left, and we'll be, we'll be sold out of those this year. So we're already two years behind on, on inventory on this particular east side of Brandon.
And those, I guess, on, on kind of the east, east side there, the, those, the anticipations kind of like, similar to what Allan Home does, slab on grade, kind of night.
Yeah, yep. The, the east side villa lots would be something comparable to, to, yeah, Allan, Allan Homes or, or even some of the, the Harlem-y stuff. A lot of what Allan Homes does is slab on grade. I guess we'd like to mix in that style of home but have lower levels under them, to maybe try to target some, you know, target more families and stuff with them as, as well, too, so.
So it would be kind of phased from the street back, you know, multifamily?
Yeah, so the, the eight acres of the orange there, there's eight point two acres of multifamily.
Orange towards the orange.
The darker orange, that'd be eight plexes and twelve plexes in there, like one, one bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, two bath, three bedroom, two bath type townhomes in there, transitioning to four plexes, and then transitioning to twin home lots. And then as you work in the development, it'd be more, more medium-sized residential. And then the, I mean, I wouldn't want to say higher end, but the, the larger lots, the eighty-foot, I guess, low-density residential would be in that final phase in the northwest corner.
Nick, do you think that the darker orange would be available for the grants or the loans from the workforce money that came out of the legislature?
I'm not sure. It's something we could look into, but nothing that would be.
It's supposed to be for infrastructure, so.
Okay, okay, perfect.
So I see the bullet point here from P and Z talking about this not meet, matching the city's comprehensive plan. Can somebody speak to that?
Go ahead.
The comprehensive plan shows a little bit of like that commercial and general business right at the intersection of Chestnut and Redwood. And kind of the thought process behind that was those two roads would be, become an arterial road, and so it just makes sense to put some general business. With the school being back there, that was a little bit new and was probably not discussed during that comprehensive plan. And so having P and Z seemed to approve of having it all residential and not putting in general business in that corner.
Real quick, could I have you flip to sheet six? I just want to maybe go over the, the drainage basin sizes. Go. Right there, that, that one, perfect. So there's four drainage basins out there. Everything in here, except for the northeast basin floor, would drain to the southeast towards where that trunk line extension would come up. So I guess the biggest thing I want to point out is about eighty-five percent of this development is, is sewerable to that trunk line extension. There is a little bit there in the west, northwest corner, that'll go into, into future Chestnut, whenever that gets built out down the, down the, down the road. I believe that's thirty percent designed right now, and again, I, I know that there was some resistance on, on the annexation there, but again, that's our fourth and final phase, but I guess the biggest thing I want to point out is, again, that importance of that, that, that west side sewer is, is where most of this development is going to be sewerable to.
So just to add to that, it's actually the east side sewer project. I said it wrong first, so I apologize for that.
I'm, I'm hooked up on your, yes, east side, sorry. Yes.
So we have it sixty percent designed, so what would be the next step to get it moving?
So they would start their preliminary plans. Once they start their preliminary plans, city staff will review it, will make sure that our design works well with their development. Then once we bring the preliminary plans in front of council for formal approval, they will also petition for those improvements, and council can at that time decide to put it in. We'll also bring that up at the CIP meetings and make sure that that's in the budget. I am also working on putting together some cost estimates for that little bit of sewer that will have to go inside of Chestnut Boulevard. That's his fourth phase there. As he stated, it's a little bit down the road yet, it's not immediate need, and so we can put that in the CIP and kind of see where that would fall as well, so that when they petition for that, we would have a good plan moving forward for it.
So Nick, the multifamily, would, would they own those, or would those be rental? Do you know at this point?
The, the, the eight acres of multifamily would be leased out. The, 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 the eight acres of multifamily would be leased, the fourplexes would be leased, but then the twin homes, the twin homes would be sold, and then, yeah.
All right. One quick, one last little quick for you, Nick. What kind of price points are you thinking in this development, have you got thought that far?
We haven't gotten that far yet. I mean, obviously, with the school, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna target families, but I, I, I can't say for sure. Honestly, lot sizes are gonna drive a lot of, a lot of that, but you can see with the, the R2 and the more medium density, we're trying in this world that everybody knows that's kind of really taken off in the last two years to try to ratchet some things back in, but give people a nice home for the, for the most, you know, economical price point as possible.
It'll be whatever the market can bear.
Yeah.
Anything else? Sounds good, looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the twenty twenty-two health insurance renewal.
We received our renewal quote from Wellmark. It's an eight, almost about an eight, eight and a half percent increase in insurance rates for the twenty twenty-two renewal, which is in June, and that leaves us about ninety-two thousand dollars below budget.
I will make a motion to, if I've heard of my experience, they have an eight percent increase in healthcare.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'd second.
Do we do that now?
We can.
Oh, good.
Usually we do it in June when the renewal's done, but with, with the rates are good, so we can, we can.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just remind the council that we had, had to guess at a bit of the budgeting for this because we've made some changes midterm, so we had factored in expectations of everybody coming on board with family plans. But, I mean, I support it. I think that with the claims that we had, I think it's, it's a great rate, but I just don't want. the claims that we had, I think it's, it's a great rate, but I just don't want us to get super attached to the budget piece of it, cause we were doing a little bit of guessing.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, we have a motion to approve the health insurance renewal plan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Same sign. Motion carries. Encore Park Subdivision Construction Agreement.
Uh, this is a subdivision construction agreement. Uh, this is a little bit new because Hague's development is a little bit different than some of our other developments. Um, Hague is actually selling land and platted it before they're putting in other utilities. Um, most of the other developers put in other utilities first, and so that they don't have to require this, uh, performance bond. This performance bond is a little bit expensive, but it's, it's pretty good. It's kind of like insurance for the city, whereas if they don't finish their utilities, then we can cash in the performance bond, hire it on ourselves, and then they're responsible for the costs. Um, so their performance bond is four point two million dollars. And all the, out, everything is outlined within this agreement for it.
There was a question Thursday night at the briefing meeting, uh, regarding Section sixteen, where it refers to the city of Sioux Falls. We, we don't have our own minimum testing requirement yet, so we are stealing Sioux Falls, so.
Borrowing.
Correct. Borrowing.
Do we need a motion?
Yep. I will make a motion to approve, please.
A motion in a second to approve the Encore Park, uh, subdivision construction agreement. Any further discussion?
I just, uh, briefly, uh, in my experience, I, I like performance bonds. It rarely be unusual, rarely, but you can always hold that over the top of a, 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 sure that you have to work that.
And we do require them for all city projects. We just haven't required them for developers, but now that we have our good template here, it's gonna become a standard.
Okay, that's, that's a great idea.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. E Streets Work Report, Water and Sewer. Raleigh, anything?
They're working on the, I'll let Tammy speak to it, I guess, the corridor over this up.
Yeah, so it wasn't exactly warm enough to pave anything today. So they're going to do Seventh Avenue and Cedar Street tomorrow. They're actually bringing in an extra paver, so they'll be able to do twice as much as what we originally thought. Um, if weather holds out, they will be done on Thursday. So it does overlap with the rummages a little bit, but we're trying to work through that the best we can. And it is supposed to rain, so I'm going to assume they're going to work on Friday as well. But we are doing door tags, and so everybody's notified twenty-four hours in advance. We did make a project website, so we're trying to point everybody to the website for updates. And then we did post it on Facebook this morning, so hopefully everybody has the link to the website and can look at that often, because I think it's gonna be a project that's going to constantly be changing.
Okay.
So Seventh and Cedar?
Seventh and Cedars tomorrow, yes.
And then what's the pacing after that?
Um, it is sixth. Now I'm gonna have to look at the website. We changed it about five times today. Um, it's sixth on Wednesday, fifth on Thursday, Elm on Friday.
They just have to be off of it a few hours, correct?
So they need to be off of it by nine AM. We'll close the street at nine AM, and then we'll open the street the next day at six-thirty in the morning. So all routes to school should be the same. It's just getting home, that's gonna be a little bit different. And so we do have a few kids that have mobility issues, and we're gonna try to work around that the best we can, cause this area doesn't have sidewalks. And so it makes it extremely difficult to try to, uh, help out those families.
How are you gonna do that?
Stop the paver and wait for the school to get out. Yeah, that's about all we can do. So, um, Tuesday is Seventh and Cedar. Wednesday is Sixth Avenue and Conifer Street. And then Thursday is Fifth Avenue, and then Elm Street. And then if budget allows, we will do, um, Fleetwood Circle as well. So we'll see how it goes.
It's okay if we don't spend all the budget. I mean, it's just okay.
We get really good prices, so.
All right. New business. Executive session?
Yes.
So all those that don't need to be here?
Need a motion to go into executive session to, uh, cancel the meeting.
Motion in a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Can I ask how long these, what steps?
Um, I would like it done in less than ten minutes. I would like it done in five.
All right.
Yeah, I don't need it. I don't need it. I don't need it.